Should we just be rebels and start like 10 seconds early?
All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call a regular meeting of the Elmont Township Board of August the 12th, 2024. In order to respect the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every nation. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, any additions or deletions from any board member? Not the agenda will stand approved as presented. Moving on to the consent agenda. We've got a regular meeting minutes of July 8th, the township payroll and monthly bills in the amount of 204,166.92, and we do not have our treasures report.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the regular meeting minutes, July 8th, 2024, and the township payroll and the monthly bills in the amount of 204,166.92, and acknowledge the treasures report.
Support.
Any discussion?
I just had one question.
Sure.
On the bills, $244 for water and sewer at the Ballfields?
Well, they, it's probably the first one this year, isn't it?
Yeah, it's every three months, so, yeah.
So it's $80?
We did have a leak.
Okay, that would make sense.
Yeah, okay, and it was on probably for maybe, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes before I could get over there and shut it off. So, because they called, the city, the village called us right away, but I, um, any other questions?
There's a charge to BSNA for about $4,800 for computer. What was that? Was that training?
It's, I think, just our regular, like, per count payable general ledger for all our stuff.
Okay, all right, thanks.
It's like the yearly membership subscription.
For all those different modules that we have assessing and, you know, general ledger.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Moving on to the report section, chief.
All right, should I have a summary of my meeting minutes for those three goals? A little bit above average becoming normal for the fireworks and the fire sites, I think, that would break this month. It was a pretty good place to stop.
Um, usually in summertime, have we had, you had some training out at Pinecrest here just recently, is that true with the?
Pinecrest?
With the dry well, a drive?
Right, dry hydrant, yeah.
And are you doing other training? Remember how we always, we get, um?
Yeah.
We have questions, we have questions about how much water we use.
Yeah, we don't use any water anymore unless we have to. We have to in June, July, and then August. Just in those villages, trying to leave those uses of it.
For some reason, those are the high use, well, obviously, high usage, but also the high rates, they charge more for them, so.
Right, yeah, those three months of the year, they charge the village water, or chart the village water use, and then they base their fees on that, those three months. So we try to work to stay out of that.
Yep.
So this time of year, we do a lot of tanker shovels, and we do the water transfers from the dry hydrants and from the ponds like in my house and that. So we get that side of things in.
Any other questions for, thank you, sir? The police reports next, our new chief, Dan Willis, has on, started to work. And I met with him today, and it sounds like there's, he's gonna make some changes to this report, so I don't know if it's gonna be done ready for the, for the September meeting or not, but there will be some changes to it, so.
When did he come on board?
Well, he was officially hired last Tuesday at the meeting, at their board meeting.
Okay.
But he had been here, you know, talking to folks and stuff like that before.
Okay.
Any discussion at all that have him come to our meetings at all?
Not yet. I just had a brief conversation with him today, because he's interested in getting some copies of our ordinances that, um, um, we would like to have the police in force, and basically, you know, we've got the fireworks one and.
I'd like, I'd like to see if he'd attend our meetings.
Okay, all of them are just.
Yeah, I think all of them. Number one is, I think that he should come to at least one of our meetings soon to introduce himself, really.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we'll, we'll agree on that, I mean.
I would like to meet him.
Yeah, it just seems like, I mean, in the past, we have, not the past one that we had, but the previous ones, we've, I think, they attended our meetings, and we could always ask questions. Just see, see if he'd be.
In the morning.
You know, and I, I understand it sticking around till seven o'clock, one night a month, but maybe he could come in at 10 o'clock in the morning or something, you know, and work it out, anyways.
Any other comments or questions on the police report? Now, let's move on to the assessor.
Our assessors here are all until end of August?
End of August, yes. They're out, they're on two weeks vacation right now, and they'll come back on the last Tuesday of the month, and then Wednesday, um, they'll be meeting with Mitch, he'll spend the day with Mitch, he's coming in on the 28th.
And whoever we go with will also be providing us a report as well?
Any comments, questions on that? Moving on to our first public comment, and even the audience wish to be recognized at this time. Oh, okay.
Oh, just back to the assessor real quick. I mean, he's gonna be leaving shortly. I think we should consider getting something to when he leaves, start thinking about it.
Jeff and I are.
All right.
Run stuff up.
Anything, okay, let's move on to a public comment, anyone in the audience who wish to be recognized at this time? If not, let's move on to old business, any update on the dugouts? Anything new on that, Randy from?
No, last I heard that Terry was gonna go and get a price from Legacy over there, which never hit, and.
Yeah, I talked to Terry over there, the owner, and he says he's just been super busy, hasn't done it yet, so I told him we're still interested, so we're still waiting to hear from him.
Okay, and fencing, we're gonna wait until we decide what we're gonna do with the ditching out there before we put any fences up on, on Scotch Settlement.
Well, and then back to the dugouts, I guess, what do we, we're just gonna go another 30 days, and what are we, what are we? I, I don't know, where are we at? I mean, we're gonna drag this on, we dragged it on already three, four months.
Well, if we, are we, do you think we'll be able to get a quote from them?
I'll call them again, Paul, I talked to them about 10 days ago, so.
Yeah.
But he did say he would not move it and, or erect it.
Right. He can, he can build them, but he cannot construct them.
Okay.
So what were our pricing on the existing bids? Can you refresh our memory on that?
Which ones do you want to know?
All of them.
I think we, well, the one from Superior Art was 16,435 for the 10 by 24, and the 10 by 32 was 22,625. I believe Rob came up there to the field one time, he met with us there, whatever, and he did get back to me and said that the smaller version would work. Um, we do have prices on wood ones. My thoughts of the wood ones are, you know, they're gonna be there maybe 20 years, but I think these steel ones, the way they're erected and, and bolded down to the cement, if for some reason they ever had to be moved, they could come apart, be moved. So that's.
Now, I was over at Elba's complex, they've got cinder block dugouts.
They got metal ones. Oh, Elba, not, I'm sorry, that was Attica.
Cinder block's pretty inexpensive by comparison, so I, I mean, I don't know where we're at with it, I don't know what the leaders want.
High school's got, high school softball and hardball have got, um, black dugouts as well. And then on the smaller fields, the junior varsity field, there wouldn't.
Well, I, I think we just need to do something like.
Maybe you guys aren't partial, are you partial?
Um, well, we're kind of now going back, right, because we've been on that's, you know, these steel structures and fences for months and months, so.
Right.
Okay, going back to cinder block, you know, I guess the only negative for a lot of us was just, you know, they're stuffy, you know, you got kids in there, um, you know.
Correct.
You know, at this point, I mean, really, we, we want, you know, we want, we want to get it all, I mean, we're past when we want, we thought we'd have something being erected by now, you know, and you know, not that we're trying to be pushy, but it just won't be thought. Um, I mean, we want to get price on cinder block, I know we can. Um, but I know, um, we're also pursuing right now a grant, but that's not gonna be in October. Uh, now with those grants, um, there is a kind of stipulation where you can't start the project. So we inquired on, if we were to go out and demo the dugouts and do cement pads, would that, um, be considered starting the project? And they said, no. They said, if you wanna demo those, then do cement pads, it'd be ready to go, and whatever, go for it. Um, now, the grant's not gonna be much, I mean, you know, what we kind of figured and thought was, you know, the township will fund it, recover the structures, and, you know, maybe the concrete or whatever. Um, and then the grant can do fencing, um, you know, all the equipment that's, you know, in the dugouts and whatnot, um, and anything else we can come up with, which is not, I think, yeah. Um, that would be a deal. Um, we could get a cement quote from, um, Orlando Basin area, that was for the larger dugouts, the consent by.
Yeah, and I think you said too that there was other contractors within our community.
I had three cement guys within, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, give each one of them a chance to bid on it, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely. But, so the quote we got for the, all six dugouts, the larger dugouts was around 19.5, I think. So we shrink those down, I mean, roughly, I, I mean, you're probably gonna be then, uh, about, 12, 13, or six cement pads for dugouts, which, you know, is pretty reasonable, but, um, you know, definitely, we'll have to say, hey, look, it's, uh, a couple of people, or, you know, see, maybe each one of them will take, you know, two field days, and, you know, but there are signs on each one, I don't know.
How, how much is the grant amount that you guys hope to get, okay?
Until the end of October.
Okay.
So, um, maybe you probably help out Janae's.
Yep.
She and her are gonna work on that together, because she's very familiar with all that.
Right.
Um, so we're gonna work on getting that together for October first, for the submission of that, and that we won't know until the end of October, if anything happens.
I'm glad you were here tonight, and kind of going along with what Randy said, um, this is very frustrating to me also. I know it is frustrating to you, but we need to move forward, we cannot start going backwards now. We've been spinning our wheels for a long time. I probably know that you wanted to move forward this a long time ago, and, um, we, we have to, we have to start moving. Um, so I know that we have ARP money to spend on this. Can you refresh my memory? I know we have to allocate this by the end of the year.
Yes.
And when do we have to spend that money?
End of '26, or '25, I'm sorry, December 31st, '25.
All right, um, we just have to start making some solid steps forward. This, this is just not, we're not getting anywhere. And that's, that's, um, disappointing.
Back and think back, you know, all of us, I mean, we've been in the 80,000 to 90,000 dollars on everything, it hasn't really fluctuated a whole lot. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna cost for these nice dugouts that are gonna last a long time, so.
And, and probably the cost has gone up in the year we've been chatting about, chatting about this. Um, yeah, yeah. Um, if we go ahead and allocate the money, do we have to be very specific as to the company that we're using, the amount that we're using? Or can we just say we are?
It's just a project, it's just a project, so what we've done in the past with the government with our reporting, it just says like, you know, for limestone for roads, or, you know, stuff like that, we, when we did the sidewalk on Kitter Road, it was just, you know, the sidewalk was put in there, we didn't care, you know, they don't care who it is.
So we can actually allocate this, and I think that's a good idea. Um, can we do this? Can we, um, get something done and, um, maybe do that next month at the board meeting?
Let's see what the grant on it comes back, okay?
We're not gonna have it, we're not gonna have it.
That's correct.
Don, Don had a question, Don had a question up there.
I couldn't give you this, but a formal request with two options, wood, metal, or on basin area, including foundation, slab work, fencing, and get our numbers back for a defined scope of each one of those contractors. So when you made your choice, you know that the 90 grand covers every piece of metal structure or every piece of wood structure, other questions will know until you build it.
90 grand, 90 grand will not cover structure, fencing, that just, everything.
Yes, that was just you test example.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, they will.
We've got all the numbers, we just have to make sure that they're, they're still firm.
Okay, no, I, I don't know, I just hear.
Yeah, we've got, we've got the numbers, we just need to see if they're still firm, because they're six, eight months old, so.
I, so are you gonna get ahold of everybody then and ask them about their prices?
Well, I can, the ones that, that, I mean, I, I can call the ones I've got, yeah, I mean, the ones that you've got, some of the bids that you've got from Superior there.
If, if you don't need an exact number, you need to allocate for a job, so roll the baseball, you just, can we do that and start the demo and get the cement pads in and, you know, I mean.
Well, the money does, I mean, we can go ahead and spend the money right now, I mean, we can start tomorrow if you want it to, if, if the board wanted to. I mean, there's no, there's no allocation until we have to have it ready to go for December 31st of this year. We haven't spent the money by December 31st, then we have to have the allocation for the next year. But, and if it's spent, it's, that's the best thing, if we could spend the money and get it done, at least get started.
I, I think these structures aren't gonna be built overnight either, because they're gonna have to be found there, then they're gonna have to be brought down and all that, so that's the one that I have from Superior, that's what they were like, you know.
Well, I'm sure they're gonna want some progress money anyway, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I.
You know, buy, buy the material or something, so.
You're gonna want the cement in before winter, because in the spring it's gonna be too wet, you know, baseball starts.
But then again, too, though, but we don't, are we gonna go with a steel structure, or a cinder block, or a wood structure, that's what.
We have to make that, we have to make that decision in.
I mean, I'm, I'm ready to, to go with a steel one tonight, so.
I agree.
I don't know if anybody else here is.
We can't do all six steel structures. There's, that's over 100,000 dollars, you're gonna say that's six structures?
We're gonna spend 100, 100,000, over 100,000 dollars on six lean tubes?
Are you willing to say, okay, we do, like, I just don't think we have the money to do all six structures at that.
It's there, right?
No, we have, there's ditching to do on Scotch Settlement, there's a lot others of that, to put that much money just in baseball fields, I think. I don't think we can do all six, that's my opinion. Do we do four?
Well, I guess first off, the board needs to decide on how much money they want to spend on this project.
I thought we did that before we left the last meeting.
No.
Somebody said a number. Did you not say?
Well, I, we were hovering around 100 grand, I thought, if you go with the metal structure.
We have, we have no, no motion or anything else of this yet.
What's, what's, what's the balance in the ARPA funds? How much is there that we have?
189?
No, I think it's 168.
Okay.
I think it was 168.
Okay.
Approximately 168,000.
So it was important to me, if I, if I remember correctly, that we use, um, that money also to put in the fencing for Scotch Settlement Cemetery. I'm assuming that's not going to be more than $60,000. Um, can, and, but I just want to make sure that the board allocates it, I want to make sure it is in the minutes, I don't want to run the risk of losing that money. Um, so the good thing is, like Paul said, we have until the end of 2026 to use it, but it's important to get it in the minutes that it is allocated. Um.
We're, we're for fencing, uh, $40,000, it'll do.
Boy, nothing is cheap these days.
Is that Paul, weren't you, did you say that you were gonna get a price on steel versus the aluminum?
I talked to them about it, and they said the steel's more expensive than the aluminum.
Do you have to put stone and stuff under that too, or no?
No, this is, the fencing was one of the, I had those pictures, it's aluminum, it's raised up off the ground, probably six or eight inches, so that they can get a mower in there, and it's like what they've got over in Metamora, it's a cemetery there on Dryden Road. That's, that's pretty much the one I copied.
Is, is there anything else that we need to use that ARPA money for, that you can?
There's always.
Well, I know, there's always stuff.
You were talking about, like, using some of that for ditching, weren't you?
Yeah, but we, well, that was a whole nother project that we aren't sure what we're doing now, we met with the road commission the other day.
We need to discuss that and get some more ideas there on the ditching.
If, if we allocate, just let's say 100,000 dollars, can we go back in a month or two if we see that that number is different, and we don't need that full 100,000? Can we, um, make another motion and change that number, or is that going to cause a problem?
No, it's not, no problem, I mean, you can always change the amount.
Okay, so we could.
Do you think you can do all six with that, with 100,000, or no?
Well, well, if you said 16 per, for the smaller, that's, that's nice.
16,435, if that price is still good.
But that's just for the material, correct?
That's.
Not for them to construct?
Yes, that's put up.
That's powder coated.
I thought that was just materials.
No, 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 that's, that's doing everything.
Okay.
Randy, is there a fence as well?
No, that's no fence, no slab.
So what I would like to see, okay, I don't mind allocating, but we have to know what number we're looking at
Mm-hmm.
per dugout with fencing, the slab, the cement, erection, the whole ball of wax, and that we know where we're gonna go with, how many we're gonna do.
Right, like, I don't want them to tear down six, and then you come back with prices, and we can only do four, we don't have.
We need a hard figure on each dugout.
25,000 each dugout.
Will you, you will hear back on that grant, you think, October, you said?
But the grant's not very much money.
It's, it's not a whole lot.
That's, that's what he's.
But you're saying 25,000.
We'll say 16, and you guys.
Right, but if you're saying 25,000 per dugout, that's, that's over what we just said, that's why I'm saying, I don't want you to tear them down.
Well, let's, uh, I think the cement, Rob, get ahold of these other contractors, get a price on a slab for that size. Okay, let's firm that up. The other thing is, Attica has, would be the identical fencing that is gonna be used. Why can't we get ahold of that fence company that did theirs and find out what it would be? Or you got a price there back for the fencing, I think, did you get that from?
Yeah, fencing around the dugout was, um, uh, 7,500 dollars.
For how many?
For six of them.
But that was 2022, or 21?
Right, yeah, September 22.
That's the fencing for around the dugout?
Yeah.
I sense there's some hesitation with allocating the number you gave, it sounds like there's a, um, desire for more, for a more firm number. Can, can we, can we decide and to do something at next month's meeting?
I want to make sure, because the ones I'm, his estimate, I mean, I got an estimate here, you know, from December 14th of '23, I mean, we, I don't think we can hold him to that anymore.
Might have gone up.
Superior.
Yeah.
Find out if that price is still good through next month.
You know, we, we have two superiors, we have Superior Contracting Group, and we have Superior Art, so.
Art, Superior Art. Um, and then get ahold of that fencing company, and ask them to ditto what they did over there at Attica, because it'd be the same structure.
That's small. Those are, those are.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Those are, there's no name, there's no name on there, I didn't have to give Al a call on it.
Okay.
Yeah, and it is hard to pretend by very. And I mean, I want.
We've got, yeah, we got a chain link fence company right here in Elmont, so we can give service a call.
Okay, and let's get ahold of that local, and.
Just look a bunch of ways.
But when we come back to the next meeting.
Yes.
Let's be prepared to either.
Spend money.
Or not spend money.
Right.
No, I'm willing to spend money for it, but I just don't want you to tear down six, and then we say, oh, sorry, now you don't have two dugouts.
Can you help me with steel structures, at least, and then we can, to the cement, to the fencing, or that?
I think we need to look at the whole package. I mean, this is 100,000 dollars, we, we're more diligent when we spend 5,000 dollars, we get three quote, written, valid quotes. We can't just like be willy-nilly with this.
And you need to get ahold of Superior Art and make sure that price is still good.
And, and let's not forget, this is ARPA money, this was a gift from the government, this is, this is a great use, so I would, I would like to see next month, perhaps, we're able to move forward, but hopefully we have those numbers, and we all feel a little better about that.
The Ballfields are used by.
I know. I know.
Well, even, even the school comes over, and I believe you said that junior varsity uses that.
JB uses it.
Right, right, no, I.
I think we're all on the same side, I think the, some members of the board just want those numbers a little tighter, and, and I, um, we, we need, but we need to get that in the minutes, those funds are allocated, so we don't lose that.
I'm happy to give whatever, you know, I think Paul, if it's a good structure, I, I'm happy to give whatever I get, I, I can get the cultures, whatever it takes. Are you guys demo, do, gonna demo them, or does that, you do, okay, I just wondered if someone else needed to get a quote for that.
Because here again, our quotes included demoing, the ones before, I know the ones from Superior and, and Malberg and that, they've, they've all quoted demoing them.
We'll, we'll get a demo.
So I can take that out of the equation.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Again, what, I want you to have them, I just don't want you to tear them down, and we, like, we can't afford to do six.
Jenny will help me get this ready for the next meeting.
I will. I will. I'm going to vacation.
So am I.
They took that third tree down, didn't they? But they, didn't they leave it like?
I know, they left like fifteen feet of it.
If anybody wants to cut it down, they cut it down.
Okay, let's, let's move on. No questions on the fencing, right? We're waiting on that until we get to decide on the ditching.
Who did you get a steel price from on that fencing?
I talked to Four Seasons Fencing and MEI.
When, when you talk to Superior Art, ask them for a price, see what they say.
They do fencing too?
They'll do it. Yeah, they'll build anything. Just see what, see what, yes. They, I think, were they powder coated? Steel?
Yeah.
Yeah, heat powder coating too, so check it out, see what. We got to call them anyways.
And then hopefully we can allocate that money for the fencing at next, the next board meeting also.
Well, steel's, if steel or aluminum is going to change in price, you know, all the time. So if we.
Right.
Allocating, we, we need to order it and get it done.
Right, absolutely.
All right, let's move on to our new business with the Assessment Administration Services LLC. I put in your packet today, the letter from Lisa Griffin concerning the conflict of interest that we had raised and then the changes that we had made or she had made, we'd requested to the contract. And hopefully we're ready to approve this tonight so that they can start on September 1. Should be in order, hopefully.
I move to approve the contract with Assessment Administration Services for assessing services and authorize the supervisor to sign on behalf of the township.
A motion to support to approve the contract with Assessment Administration Services for assessing services and authorize the supervisor to sign on behalf of the township. Discussion.
So I noticed that they have under the retention of contractor, section three, about the 10th bullet point down, it says provide office hours and availability for the assessor of record one day per week, exceptions for vacations, holidays, sick days, availability via remote access and email if needed. We're basically paying the same amount for one person, one time a week, and we had two people twice a week.
We're, we're paying to have a job done. They're providing us assessing services. It is not, we don't pay for time. I mean, Tom and Debbie choose to come in here and do the work, but this guy, you know, he can, he can work remotely from anywhere. The only thing he can't do is measure, you know, things like that. But so we're, we're, this contract is for assessing services. It's not for time here.
It says one day a week.
I know, but that's our request to have them here because to answer to the public. That's what that's for.
It doesn't say one day a week or as needed. It just says one day a week.
A week, right. That's what he has. We talked about this, you know, last month when, when this came up.
They're not going to agree now.
So he will be in the office one day a week? That's the plan?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that is what I understood. And then if somebody, a resident or somebody needs to reach him, your company was open to email, Zoom, something like that? And that, I would assume that that goes for any of the board members that have a question. I'm assuming we'll be able to pick up the phone and give him a call and he will have a, a quick answer for us if we need something quickly.
Well, if you remember right, when Mitch was here last month, he said that he doesn't like to sit on phone calls or emails. He likes to take care of them right away. That way they don't get lost, so.
Right. I remember that and I was happy to hear that. I just wanted to confirm that it was all, it was everybody's understanding yet.
I'd like to know too, that we do have a very large staff. So if something came up, say you have a big development or something, can we bring people in to take care of that?
We're, we're, actually, we are going to have, we've got almost 50 homes going out here at Pinecrest over the next few years. They're still working on that. That should be ready to go. We've got another one, Daisy Lane, that's got a few homes out there. So in the next, you know, three, four years, we're going to have quite a bit, quite a few homes.
Come in for the whole day to help with the public, do the administration. As far as going out measuring, he may want to look at it, but we'll have staff people who'll all measure, draw, take pictures, you know, do the day-to-day input.
Have we folks sat down with our current assessor yet? On 28th, Mitch comes in on the 28th of this morning.
Twenty-eight, okay.
And we can leave with two numbers and two contacts. That way for something you mentioned, you know, on the technical line or another member, you know, so that.
Okay. Perfect.
You've always been very responsive when I've called you. I know that, so.
My next question is one regards to Michigan tax tribunals. It says in here that you can provide legal counsel at an additional cost to defend the Michigan tax tribunal. Does that mean if we go to tax tribunal, it will cost us more?
Typically, we have seven level fours on staff. We'll do the, the value disclosures and do it ourselves. But through our scenarios, you may already know, but for example, in Auburn Hills right now, we're doing the Stellantis appeal. So it's five billion square feet. So we brought an attorney that specializes in that type of stuff.
Our attorney has handled them in the past for us and that's at a cost to us.
But, but I mean, when, when they go, Tom goes to tax tribunal, that's not an additional cost for us currently.
No, he, he only takes the first step, the very first, when you, when it, if it keeps going up the level, level and end up in court. Once you've ended up in court, you've got to have an attorney.
Right, I understand that part, but the first steps is that covered as part of this?
Small claims and the both, both have been on probably with those small claims. And they'll like the assessor.
Okay, so that is part, that is part of, that's part of this, yes.
If it was justified, the full tribunal, it would be like, that's his job.
Any other questions? If not, let's do a roll call on this, just so that I know for sure what we got. Please.
Okay, Streeter?
Yes.
Henneke, yes. Dodge?
Yes.
Eschenberg?
Yes.
Grossbeck?
Yes.
Omen?
Yes, motion's carried. Okay, and Mitch, Mitch will be here at what, nine o'clock? Is that when he's coming in on Wednesday, the 28th?
Yes.
Because Tom and Debbie usually get in about nine, so.
I'll make sure you're there.
Okay, and I'll get this signed and I'll, I'll scan it over to you if that's all right. Okay, very good. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to road project. We have spent our entire allotment of wood ax, or brush axing and, and tree removal and stuff like that. And we've got a new contract in there. Really, it's, it's starting for September. Our year with the road commission starts October 1st anyway, so we're just a little ahead of time here with the fifteen thousand dollar approval. And, but they cover up to 50% for half of it, up to ten thousand dollars. So I'm surprised, did you ask for fifteen thousand dollars, Randy, when you asked for this contract?
No.
I was surprised when it came in there.
No, I, I think that's probably.
Because more, most of them are always ten.
All I did was that I said our intersections are really bad. Old farm trails especially, because I went down there the other day, first time I ever went down in my life. I came out, you can't see nothing.
Well, we've got.
It's a private road, but I don't care. I think it still should be done because their taxpayers don't.
Guy pull out halfway in the road.
I agree.
We don't need to decide right now where it is. We're just, if it's fifteen thousand dollars, then that's what, that's what the agreement's written for.
I think that was.
And that's why we approve.
More than enough. He's not going to come back, I don't think, for more. That would take care of everything.
Well, hopefully that would take care of us. So, okay. So a motion be in order to approve the road project agreement of fifteen thousand dollars.
To approve the road project agreement for brush axe and tree removal for fifteen thousand.
Support.
Motion to support to approve the road project agreement for brush axe and tree removal, fifteen thousand dollars. Any discussion? If not, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to our PA 116 Farmland Preservation enrollment. We've got an application in your packet for the Eschenberg Farms. And this is for some property that they have just purchased on Scott Settlement Road, I think it is.
Motion to approve the PA 116 Farmland Preservation Application for Eschenberg Farms.
Motion to support to approve the PA 116 Farmland Preservation Application for Eschenberg Farms. Any discussion?
I'm upstate.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Is this the, by the power lines?
Yes.
It's the right of way, two acres.
Any other discussion? Not all's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Me.
Motion's carried. Moving on to our last regular new business, Treasury Secretary hourly rate. Do you want to cover this one or you want to?
I can.
Okay.
I asked Paul to put that on there. When Sandy started and we did last month, her hourly rate, her job has changed since then because Bert is out of the office, Tim is out of the office. So now everything falls on Sandy and I think it's only fair that we raise her up to the same as the deputy clerk. So.
Suggested that at the last meeting, but.
Right.
I said she was a seasoned employee coming back and I, I suggested. So I'd be more than happy to make the motion to put Sandy at twenty dollars now.
And we made it effective eight, one.
Yeah, I'd like to make it back to August 1st.
August 1st.
That's when she started over.
Okay.
Support.
We've got a motion to support to approve increase in the Treasury Secretary hourly rate from eighteen fifty per hour to twenty dollars per hour effective August 1st, 2024. Any discussion?
I just want everybody to know, including Sandy, how appreciative I am that she was willing to come back and step into the, like, it was huge and it was very.
She's doing a very good job.
Appreciated, truly.
Any other discussion? If not, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Now we're up to our second public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to be recognized at this time? Yes, sir.
Eric McQuaid from 5619 Lakeview. I talked to you a couple weeks ago about the dry hydrant for Pinecrest. You mentioned that there was an agreement with the builder eighteen years ago, the power and basically limestone for the trucks to pull in. Well, the last training they did, they mentioned that the bowers weren't there. The limestone is decreasing with the grass room through it. But you mentioned that it was a Pinecrest Association is responsible for the upkeep of the dry hydrant. And my question was, why would the 31 properties in Pinecrest be responsible for upkeeping something that all the taxpayers possibly would use when the fire trucks fill up?
I will. I had a meeting, they came in from Lombardo Homes, Greg Winding Land, and you've met with them before. And we're actually, we talked about putting another dry hydrant in the larger pond that's in there. I did find out, Don, did you know those two are connected underground with tubes? Now, those two are, so that one, the big one in the back is feeding this one. He's got the design that he's got, doesn't include a dry hydrant at this time, but he does not oppose to doing it. And he's not opposed to completing the other one either. So I think we can get the thing all done at one, one time. But if you've got all those homes in there, I mean, that's definitely going to help your insurance rates of having a hydrant that, that close to you. So it's not so much the water as it is the, the, the insurance rates that, that helps you guys out there having something that close, water that close, so.
It does, it does help the whole township have a dry hydrant.
But I, well, only in certain areas. I mean, we've gone throughout the township. I don't know how many we got, Don, but.
Your particular hydrant was set up for that group of homes. We would find something on Huff Road a short distance from there, but it's not extremely far to the first municipal hydrant. We also have another dry hydrant down in Portman in that lake. So they're, they're set up for a certain area that developed instead of building. So we wanted to give you guys, you know, the water.
So in the future, is there, is there documents or paperwork that explain who's responsible for dry hydrants? The fire department, if associations, we're just kind of, so we can budget for our homeowners?
We wouldn't be, the township, the fire department is not responsible for any of it.
At the time all this came out, I was actually the planning commissioner chairman. I think if you look back at the events of those meetings, they are ones for maintaining the dry hydrant in a useful condition, went to the homeowners association.
There's actually, I also learned there's going to be three different homeowners associations out there. Yours currently, the one for the new one, then there's one encompassing both of them.
Right, there's a master deed that we have with all of them and it's.
And that's probably where we'll find it is in, in that. I haven't had time to even, even look at any of that.
So we have the Indian Dyke Pond feeds into the Big Pond, which we pump the Indian Dyke Pond with a well. And then it goes to the Big Pond, which follows into the smaller pond on cuff. And then it goes through the ditch, down the ditches, and that all goes. So in the future, do we, so we don't, we do need a budget to upkeep the limestone?
I would, I would say, I mean, once it's there, it's not going to be used, you know, hopefully that often. Hopefully you don't have to use it at all, but.
I'll be there. I just, we just, we took over the board from the builder that apparently never completed the job.
I, I would talk to Greg too, because he's well aware of the dry hydrants and, and I would talk to him too. Because he seemed to be very receptive to putting these things in, so.
He's, he's been really receptive, receptive of beautifying entrances. I mean, they want to sell their 44 lots in there.
Yes, yeah.
So, I mean.
Yep. Okay, all right. Anyone else wish to be recognized? Yes, sir?
I'm just going to bring up, it's going to be a sore subject, but with the Elmont Police Department and whatever, Flora Black and what has gone on with that? And then the other officer having a paid leave. And another case or two coming up against either the Elmont Police Department or individual officers. Do you think it's time to start looking at doing Lapeer County? Break the contract from the village?
We're in our last year of the contract right now. So that's up for negotiation and the new board can decide at that point in time if they would like to, you know, entertain, you know, quotes from Lapeer County as well. When we did this sometime, some years ago, they were, you know, almost three times more than what we were paying the village, so.
Yeah.
And they, and we didn't have a car, I mean, they, they got paid from coming from Lapeer to Elmont. So what's that, 20, 25 minutes a day, you know, twice? You, you don't have anybody here because they're coming from Lapeer. It's not like, you know, having it here. But that, I would say that for the negotiation for the, for the next three-year contract, the, the, the board can certainly look at that next summer or next spring.
What's even going to cost for insurances after the payouts?
Our, our contract's set. It doesn't cost us anymore.
Okay, but still.
That's all, that all falls on the village and the insurance company, not on us. So.
Yeah, but it also gives us a bad rap that.
Well, that's, like I say, that'd be something that the, the new board will have to look at next year with their contract.
Well, it should be one bad rap.
All right. Anyone else wish to be recognized? Okay. Moving on to correspondence. I put a copy of the latest EMS report at your, at your table or in your box, wherever, tonight. And also I received a, a letter from the Daughters of the American Revolution. And they would like to recognize, nominate the Elmont Fire Department for their continued outstanding support to our, our community. So they're looking for a letter of reference from the board and I think.
They asked you, she specifically said your name.
We're going to respond to that and get the fire department recognized.
What are they going to get? What?
Do you need a motion or anything for that?
I don't think so. It's just a letter of reference. I don't know.
So would, do you get a medal? What do you get, like a, like a plaque or what?
I let the cat out of the bag.
I'm sorry. Sorry, the surprise is over.
With personals.
Sorry.
Yes, you're absolutely looking forward to the biggest report we ever.
Also, I've had a, a request from Officer Wilson. He has been taking some phone calls, I guess there's the gentleman going around on a hoverboard in, in the township and in the village, and people are calling the police, and the police go there and there's not much they can do because we do not have a solicitation ordinance, nor does the village, I find out today. So I guess my question is, are we interested in drafting an ordinance against, or not against it, but saying they have to register and so on and so forth, there's all different types that are, that are out there. I don't want to spend any time at it if we're, the board tonight interested in, in having something like that done.
I'm definitely interested. From what I hear, from what I read, it's a major inconvenience and it's kind of scary for people if they see the same people around their homes and, you know, the side of the garage and it, it's, we can definitely do something at our level.
Yeah, it, it's still not going to stop that.
It won't.
Because he can register, he or she can register with us here, we give him a, a permit to do that, they can still go out. The only thing we can do is, we can put, you know, I, I heard some, Brian told me that, you know, somebody at nine o'clock at night, I don't know if it's true or not, we can limit the hours too.
Absolutely.
So if you're interested in it, I'll, I'll get going on something like that with the, with the attorney.
He actually zipped right into my garage.
Really?
So.
Okay. Is this a regulatory ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll go ahead and, and get that started then, so. And the other thing is, is that I just shared with Dennis Swears tonight, MTA, our township organization's just come out with, they're starting to do this zoning and everything for renewable energy, and we've got, I got four different documents here so far, there's, still hasn't got the, the, the actual ordinance written yet, but it's coming out. When I talked to our attorney before, he says just wait for them to come out with it because that'd probably be the best one. They're waiting for guidance from the state of Michigan right now on that new, the new law, so that's going to be forthcoming and I'll get this out to the planning commission for their meeting Wednesday to, to take a look at what we have so far. But I, I know that they're, they're working on it, so. So that's all I have as far as correspondence concerned. Anybody else got anything in correspondence?
I had a comment about the solar. Dennis had brought this up a few times in our planning commission and our representative from Row seems to be more than reluctant to act on it in any fashion.
Well, so was our attorney, they said to wait, and, and when I talked to Bob, Bob says just wait, wait till this stuff comes out, because nobody really knows what that law says for sure, how it, you know, they've got to interpret that whole thing. So hopefully, it looks like now they've started to do this now, and we'll, we'll see what everybody comments on this thing now, see what's out there. So I know Goodland Township has this because he called me today and told me about it, so I, I printed it off right away, so.
Is that for everything or is that just the?
There's no ordinance yet, these are, these are just some of the things that you have to have ahead of time, you know, for doing it, there's a.
Because there's a threshold, right Dennis? There's a threshold of 40.
50 megawatts.
Yeah, I have, I haven't even read this thing yet, but there's 100, I see capacity of 100 megawatts in here named, but I'll, I'll get this thing, get, get out of planning.
Because even 50 megawatts is pretty big, right? What's the one on, in LaPierre?
Here is 48 megawatts.
Right.
And it's not covered by the state law, so.
Yeah.
LaPierre city had handled that, as far as I can, it's topic for discussion on Wednesday night, but 100, 150 megawatts, I think it would fall back to the local community.
We'll get this out and you guys can take a, take a look at it then. Anything else for correspondence? I got a couple items under board discussion if we're done with that. I've had the suggestion from one of the residents, they would like to see some flagpoles in, in Webster Cemetery. He's concerned with Webster because that's where he owns a plot. And I have looked at a couple, you know, like 30-foot flagpoles with a light and everything, we're looking, you know, at about 600, 700 bucks a piece, and that's not installed. And I would think I was going to talk to, you know, our, our cemetery sexton to see if they'd be interested in installing them and what, what a price would, would be to, to do it if we're interested in putting a flagpole up.
Definitely. That is a great idea.
It also comes, it also comes with a certain amount of maintenance to make sure that we, when they're at half-staffed, they're at half-staffed, that the, the flags are not torn or battered.
Cemetery, cemetery, the cemetery flagpoles that I've seen are, they do not comply with that, but it does, I mean, you're supposed to.
You can get a great deal of pushback if we don't do it right, so we just have to, you know, the sexton needs to be prepared to maintenance those the way they need to be maintenance.
John hasn't. Just make sure they're close to a solid rope because you're taking these cemeteries over and you'll need to change the rope with the ladder truck.
The ones I've been looking at don't have, they're telescoping.
They have a lot.
They're telescoping, so there's no rope on them, because I figure people will steal the flag if I.
Yeah. So we get a lot of requests to change the rope.
Yeah. I know, you do the one out here in front, so.
I, I, yeah, I, I think the idea is a great idea.
So, okay, I'll continue on then with that one. Also, we have had Eric suggested streetlight out at the corner, what is the name of that road? Pine?
Huff.
Huff Road and.
It's Huff, yes, it's, it enters on Huff Road.
Yeah. The, the, for the, for Pinecrest, it's, it's dark out there at, at night, and then Jenny also brought up one for Dryden and Shoemaker. We did put a few streetlights out here, oh boy, it's probably been five, six, seven years ago now, when we did Sand Hill and, and then your street over there out in Surrey, and also Webster out there. So if we're interested, I can certainly get some quotes from DTE. Hey.
That's something that we can use our ERPA funds for too, right?
Yeah. We can use ERPA funds for anything.
We should look, we should look at to see what kind of inventory we, whether other ones may be needed.
We're, we're trying to give money to the ball fields in your town.
Evergreen.
Evergreen's the name of that one? Okay. I, I started writing it down, I thought, I don't know the name of that road, so.
That is, that road on Huff definitely needs some light, so that's a great idea. I'm, I'm agreeable to all of that.
So other than that and the flagpoles and then the solicitation ordinance, that's all I have. If anybody else has got anything to, they want to bring up, this is the perfect time. I do want to thank Jenny for her fine job that she did with the election, that, so she put in a lot of, lot of hours, she and Jen did, and so far, we've only had one phone call from the canvassers up in LaPierre today, so.
I had to.
So hopefully, hopefully things are going, going well with our, our council that.
We missed the date, that's all. On paper, it didn't put a date.
Jenny did a great job on doing that, and she couldn't be here, she was instead to stay in her office, so everybody was running back and forth asking her questions, so it was, it was a job well done, though I just.
I agree.
Publicly thank her for doing a great job.
I think she's still recuperating.
I am.
She is.
She's still got that tick.
It was like 140 hours in like 11 days or something crazy.
In her eyes, it's like this.
Anyone else got anything?
Yeah, I want to mention that, I guess the fall sessions for Michigan Township Association is coming up. They've got a class over in Franklou, and Don, I was going to talk to you about that, it's called emergent, emergent issues and emergency services, a full-day workshop examining the challenges facing your township's fire and emergency services team here for firefighters and/or board members. So I'm going to attend that, that's on September 10th. I want to offer that to any other board members who might want to participate in that or any of the firefighters. Don, if you think it's appropriate, what's your feelings on that?
Send it over, I'll give you a look at it, yeah.
Okay.
It's not the September for some reason, it's a really familiar day, that's one to.
Any other takers, I'm looking for somebody to go with, but either way I'm going, so.
Oh, I'll get somebody to live if, if I have a problem.
Okay.
Is it all day or is it half-day?
Nine to five.
Yeah, okay.
We've attended those in the past, yeah.
Just congratulations to all the winners. You guys as well, Dennis, Mike.
All right.
I make.
Fun process.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion support to adjourn. All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.